Thank you. Can I welcome members, officers and members of the public viewing proceedings online to today's meeting? I will now ask committee clerk Mike Jones to briefly check that all members and officers present virtually can see and hear proceedings and also confirm that the live stream is operating correctly.
Thank you Chair, welcome to colleagues joining us today's meeting. I can confirm initially that the live stream is active and operationally. And in terms of our membership, I'll just conduct a few brief checks. So going through our list of members, councillor Marat, can you see and hear us?
All fine, thank you Michael.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Yes, all fine, thank you, morning everybody.
Good morning John. Councillor Simic.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Councillor Kemp.
I can hear, see and talk.
Thank you. Councillor Howard. Thank you. Councillor Roche.
Yes, I can hear, see and talk.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw. Councillor Shaw.
That's not me, honestly, that's not me, I'm here, yes.
Thank you, excellent, thank you. Councillor Muspat.
Hello, sorry, yes, that was me. And I can hear and see, thank you.
You did indeed, very topical, welcome. Councillor Norbury.
Hi everyone, everyone okay, yeah cheers.
Thank you. Councillor Steve Williams.
Yeah, all working correct, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes.
Good morning, yes, everything's working, thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Bream.
Good morning, all fine here, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Well now we revert to the Chair. Councillor Roche. Councillor Roche, could you just unmute your microphone please, thank you.
I beg your pardon. Thank you Mike. I'd like to take the opportunity to remind members and officers to leave your microphones on mute during the meeting until you want to comment. In addition, can officers also turn off their webcams unless you are addressing the committee? Once a member has spoken, please ensure to mute your microphone again so that the audio all around remains clear. When members or officers do wish to speak, you can either use the hand up feature at the top right hand of your screen. If you do not have the hand up feature, please indicate visibly on screen with your hand to get the attention of the Chair and committee clerk. When I do bring you in, or Mike brings you in, please unmute your mic and say your name. Please allow a brief pause where we will ensure you are visible on screen. Once you have spoken, please make sure to lower your hand also, either physically or the icon on the screen, thank you. I move to apologies. Can I advise members that apologies for absence have been received so far from councillors, Tony Bruff and councillor Brendan O'Brien? Are there any further apologies?
Councillor Cummings also, please Chair.
Thank you. Okay, recorded further apologies from councillor Cummings. Minutes of last meeting, can I refer members to the minutes of the last meeting as held on the 16th of July 2020, set out at pages one to six of the agenda? Minutes have been circulated via email to members and tabled at meeting. Do members have any questions or comments?
Don't appear to be any comments Chair.
Okay. Can I move that the minutes be approved, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
As there is no dissent, I'll move on and that will agree those minutes.
Thank you Chair, just to briefly intervene at this point and before we move on to the report item, can I just remind members if you have any interest to declare at this stage in relation to the report item, if you could indicate and verbally do so please, just for the purpose of the record, thank you. Non to declare Chair, if we can move on.
Thank you. I'll move on to the quarterly report. Can I refer members to pages seven to eleven of the Agenda Pack which comprises of the quarterly report for the period April to June 2020? Can I invite Nicola Douglas, the Chief Port Health Officer, to introduce the report? Nicola.
Thank you Chair, good morning members.
Good morning.
Okay. So for this quarterly report, quarterly report is to advise members of the current enforcement work undertaken by Mersey Port Health Authority during the period of the 1st of April 2020 to 30th of June 2020, and also to advise members of proactive projects, training and promotional work undertaken by the authority during the same period. So in regards to the report, in relation to the budget information, members will notice that there has been a decrease in the revenue generated during quarter period one. This is primarily due to a reduction in revenue generated from categories such as other and also ship charges. The main reason for that members is because of the implementation of easement measures that have been introduced due to the current Covid pandemic situation. And so therefore there's been adaptations that have been applied to the controls and it has had an implication on the charging schemes that we apply to undertake the statutory controls. The measures in relation to the ships that we have implemented currently at the moment, officers are not undertaking any physical inspections of the vessels and are carrying out a more lighter inspection, which means we look at the documentation and assess the public health risk and because of that, there is a flat fee applied as opposed to the normal charge where it would be reflection of the size of the vessel. In relation to official imported food checks, there has been a significant increase of queries that we've received and also emails to the authority. And once again, that is attributed to the easement measures that we are currently applying. So to prevent social interaction and ensure social distancing, agents are no longer able to arrive into the office and drop off documentation or deliver documentation. And so therefore they have to email the documents into the office. So that has increased the emails received in relation to the clearance of imported food. In relation to the import statistics, members will also notice that there has been an increase in imports of PLOAOS through the port of Liverpool during the quarter one period, however, there has been a decrease in FNAO products arriving through the port. Members will also note that in relation to samples, once again, due to the adaptations that have been implemented because of easement measures and also applying social distancing, we've had to cease all surveillance sampling of products and we only undertake sampling now on high risk products that arrive through the port. And so there has been a significant drop in the number of samples that have been undertaken by the authority during that period. Members will also see that there are details of products that we have tested in the table below. A total of nine consignments were rejected during the quarter one period. Members will also see that there is a table detailing the reason for rejection and also what happened to those products following rejection. There were zero inland referrals made during quarter one. And in relation to the Covid situation, the authority continues to implement the temporary easements measures that have been afforded to us by the European Commission in conjunction with the Department of Environment, Food and Rural Affairs, as well as the Food Standards Agency. However, DEFRA have recently advised our intention of removing the easement situation and we have been engaging in conversations with them. And yesterday they confirmed that for the port of Liverpool, they will enable us to carry on with the easements and permit them until the end of December. In relation to international health regulations, there's details there of the number of ship sanitation visits or ship sanitation inspections that were undertaken. However, we've had a significant reduction in water samples because, once again, in order to ensure protection of the staff and apply social distancing measures on a risk based approach, we have ceased water sampling for the time being. Probably just would like to advise members that, you know, there has been more demands on the authority to adapt the service, particularly when we've had incidents of self-isolating as well as adhering to protocols in terms of social distancing to obviously ensure that the staff are protected. And so currently at the moment, we are still applying the authority's current business continuity plan. And at the moment, we only have 80 to 90% of staff or at least workforce working remotely from home and we only have a small percentage in the office at the moment, so we can adhere to the social distancing measures. The Covid pandemic has significantly increased the work of the authority immensely. We've had to design new procedures to ensure that our work activities ensure social distancing and obviously protect the team when we're undertaking our statutory functions. We continue to make representation at meetings in relation to Covid and assist and design with the implementation of associated documents in regards to social distancing. The authority also continued to participate in a number of projects in relation to responding to the Covid outbreak. And during quarter one period, we did help design and implement a critical vessel document in association with the harbour master and also the pilots to ensure that there was restrictions and safety measures imposed when embarking and disembarking vessels. The authority has also had to do with an increasing number of vessels arriving during out of hours with suspected case of Covid-19. But we however continue to work with PHE in conjunction to dealing with those cases and other third parties to ensure that disease control measures are implemented in relation to Covid. In accordance with advice provided by the World Health Organisation, we still continue to apply enhanced surveillance measures at the port of Liverpool whereby all vessels arriving at the port have to submit a maritime declaration of health and officers will scrutinise them and then apply risk related measures in relation to them. And the authority also continues to participate in a number of meetings. And during quarter period one, we attended a total of 72. So that concludes the main issues that occurred with the authority during quarter one and I would invite members for any questions, thank you.
Do members have any questions to Nicola on the on the report?
We have councillors Kemp, Bream, Howard and Simic at this point Chair.
Okay.
Councillor Shaw as well.
Right. One moment. Councillor Kemp.
Thank you, Chair, two questions. The one is in 263, we got information about the ship arrivals and just for interest, I'd be interested to know how that compares with an equivalent period, are more ships coming in or less during this Covid period? And I really wanted to take up, I had some questions anyway, on the last point that Nicola was making about seamen safety. Do we check seamen coming onto land and into Liverpool in any way? Or have we, as it were, sealed the barrier, sealed the border and we don't let people in? She mentioned ways in which we are notified of things. How many seamen do we know have had coronavirus when they come in? How many does she suspect we might have that we don't know about? And have they had to take any action? For example, because so many on a ship had the virus that they've had to issue or can they issue restrictions on that ship sailing in unhealthy conditions for their staff? Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Kemp. In response to your first question, it's quite consistent with the vessels, you know, for that for that time period, we haven't had a significant increase or decrease in vessels arriving through the port. In relation to your second question, it is a legal requirement under international health regulations for the captains to submit a declaration of health. Within the declaration of health, they will have to advise the port authority of any persons on board that they're ill or they suspect have any illness on board. And so we have, you know, the captains are very strict with adhering to those rules. And so we do find that every vessel that arrives, we have a database to make sure that prior to them arriving, they submit that information. So with the change of the Covid pandemic at the moment, we have advised all vessels to submit the documentation prior to arriving within the port. Certainly before there's any disembarking of any potential seamen or any passengers. And we found that they are all adhering to that. If not, prior to the arrival, because we do have the times, port health staff will contact the agents to ensure that that documentation is sent to the service so that we can risk assess the vessel prior to arrival. For in regards to the seamen and whether they're permitted to disembark, if they submit the declaration of health and there's no indication of illness on board, then they're fine to disembark. If we identify that there is a suspect case of Covid on board, which has previously happened, at the time that we dealt with that case, because as you know councillor Kemp, the Covid situation is an evolving situation and so rules that could potentially apply a month ago may not be the same as they are now. So at the time with the particular case that I'm referring to, Public Health England didn't recommend that members were isolated on board the vessel. And so in conjunction with Public Health England and also UK Border Force, it was arranged for the particular crew member to be transferred to hospital and then following that to the UK isolation facility where they spend their time in isolation pending results. On receipt of the results, then if that's negative, they are permitted to return back to the vessel. If it's positive, then they have to spend their time in the UK isolation facility. And we also, as you appreciate, the current situation now with Covid is you have to do a contact management assessment. So you also do an assessment of those persons that have been in close contact and at the same time, the same measures adhere to them where they have to also isolate. So in this particular case, the other crew members that had a close contact or fell within the definition of close contact were removed from the vessel to the UK facility to spend their time in isolation as well. So there are quite strict measures and controls when we are notified of a suspect Covid case and the whole case is controlled by all the relevant agencies till we are satisfied that there is no additional risk to any persons on board or left on board or any persons that are inland.
Thank you Nicola.
Very much Chair.
Right, I have a list of questioners. Councillor Howard first, then Shaw, then Simic. Councillor Howard.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, just want to ask with regards to the shortfall in income due to the easement measures, is that anticipated to have any serious implications for the sustainability of the authority in the future? And has there been any sort of subsidy or funding to help the shortfall in income be made up? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard. In relation to the shortfall for the official checks or those easements that have been applied for imported food, sorry, as an overall assessment of the loss of revenue due to the easement measures, we are monitoring them weekly and we report them back to Liverpool City Council as well. In relation to the imported food, no, because we, where we can, we have tried to catch up. So for those consignments that we have to do mandatory physical checks and inspections because they're high risk products, we then also added on, because officers are at the port that day, we will also select other products and we will try to catch up with the physical regimes. There are physical frequencies that are set by legislation, so we're also monitoring them to make sure that we don't fall too far behind so that we can easily catch up with that. And we have been doing on certain days when we've had to go down to the board inspection post, i.e. still presented with a risk, so we might as well just try to catch up while we can. In relation to the ships, unfortunately, there isn't any way of recuperating that lost revenue and I have been monitoring it and I would say it's just any loss could have an implication on the budget eventually. But fortunately, the ship sanitation, it's not a significant loss. We are still charging for the flat rate, but it's not such a significant loss that I would say in a short term, it's having an impact on the budget, but obviously it's something that we will monitor if there's going to be a likelihood of it being long term. At the moment, not received any subsidies or any assistance in relation to that loss of revenue. I'm not aware of any funding available for that, not for Port House.
Thanks Nicola.
Thank you councillor Howard. Councillor Shaw, do you have a question?
Yes, thanks Chair. My question very much does follow on from councillor Howard's. At previous meetings, I flagged up a wish I have that perhaps every half year or whatever, that we have some sort of fairly detailed financial report. And that was almost the conclusion of my list of questions. But I would like to suggest that at the next meeting, that we have such a sort of comparison of, you know, actual against budget and therefore variance for what would then be the first half year of the financial year. But could I ask the sort of questions I've got, which are all in the financial area like councillor Howard was? And I say this because obviously we as councillors represent the three authorities and I never, don't off the top of my head whether it's a precept or a levy, but obviously we three authorities have to contribute to the required amount. And I think it's therefore important for us, for councillors from all three authorities, that we have a fairly strong handle on the financial performance, not just perhaps the finance officers within Liverpool City Council, which is just one of the three councils affected. But my first question to Nicola is that in broad brush terms, obviously we've got quarter one reported, but in broad brush terms, how is quarter two looking in terms of income? I don't mean precisely, but in broad brush terms. So that's my first question, if I could come back on the others.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Unfortunately, I don't have those data figures to hand. When we assess the revenue, we have to do a call down of the clearance system, so I don't have those budget figures available to hand for me, so I wouldn't be able to comment, I'm afraid.
That's fine. My second question is, which I would say does relate to quarter one, is how is expenditure running? And obviously therefore between the income and the expenditure, that would then be, give rise to a sort of position as regard, the net position, the net cost. Has expenditure in the first quarter been down to some extents against budget or is it broadly run at the same level because it's mostly maybe staff costs which are not being reduced?
I would say in terms of expenditure in particular for staffing costs, that it will be lower than what's expected because I do have vacancies. So in terms of staffing costs, I can confirm that most certainly at the moment, we are lower than what is anticipated because I do not have a full complement of a team. In terms of other expenditure, I do run cost saving monthly exercises to ensure that we can minimise the cost to the service because I don't feel that our budget is in a luxury position and it hasn't been for a period of time. And so we're very, very strict with what we can and cannot spend. In addition to that, we also have to adhere to financial controls that are applicable to Liverpool City Council. So it's a very strict control. So I would say that at the moment for expenditure, because of the staffing resources, that it would be lower than what is anticipated.
Yeah. And finally Chair, I may, and I did refer to this at the start of my comments, I wonder if it would be possible or appropriate to have at our next meeting, which I think is something like the 14th of January, some sort of reasonably detailed finance report, mainly provided by, you know, the finance officers at Liverpool City Council, that gives members of this committee a mission at the half year stage, so you know, obviously April to September. That I certainly would find that very helpful. I do, I have, as members that you may recall, I have sort of raised this sort of general issue a few times. Of course, the irony is that my, the previous reasons for raising it was concerns over the impact of Brexit on the port health authority. But obviously the current issue is very much the coronavirus thing, albeit that presumably one of the issues is, as a country, we still need to import the food, which is presumably the overwhelming part of the responsibility of yourself. But certainly, could I ask specifically, would it be possible to have a detailed finance report for the half year stage at our January meeting? Would that be appropriate?
Nicola.
Hello councillor Shaw. Yeah, most certainly I can speak to the finance section or whether, Michael, it would be something that would be conveyed to the finance section and asked. I run into councillor Shaw, I will be going on to the EU transition and you have touched on an issue in relation to the implications to the service. So I'm glad that you're thinking about that because it is something that will have significant impact on the service and I will discuss that in my later update.
That's great. So if that could have definitely happened, I think, well, I'm sure I'm not the only member who would welcome that. Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Simic.
Before we bring councillor Simic in, just to respond to councillor Shaw, I can confirm that I will be speaking directly to the city council's finance team to take appropriate steps to ensure that you do receive a report as a committee to the January meeting. So thank you for raising the point. Was previously admitted correctly as per councillor Shaw's recollection and we will ensure that does come forward. Thank you.
Councillor Simic.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to ask about the difference between electronic ship sanitation certificates that are issued at the moment and physically inspecting the ship. Because obviously there's a downfall in finances there, but also just in terms of safety and how has that changed for you as the authority? So that's my one question. And then the other one is about, last time we were talking about recruitment and how there was quite a few vacancies and just wanted to know if any of those have been failed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Simic. In relation to your first question, the difference with the ship sanitation light was based on a risk based approach and undertaking the inspections. So initially with the ship sanitation, officers will first and foremost review the documentation associated with the vessel and then they will attend the vessel on board, speak to the captain and review documentation held on board the vessel. And then we will undertake a physical inspection to substantiate the documentation that we viewed. In terms of the ship sanitation light, it was agreed by the Port Health Association and a number of UK ports and just generally ports that also have to enforce the international health regulations that in order to mitigate the risk to officers and also the risk to the vessels due to the Covid outbreak, that first of all, we looked to physical protection methods, which was the usual, you know, face mask, protective clothing, wearing gloves, etc. But as the levels increased with the Covid cases, it was determined on a risk based approach and in terms of potential cross contamination, what could be done to adapt those checks? And it was deemed that we could actually remotely check the physical documentation, ask the vessel to send the onboard documentation via scanned copy. And if we identify any public health risks, that we yes, would still need to go on board and do a physical inspection. But if the vessel has a good compliance record, maybe it's a vessel that we previously inspected as well over a period of time, so we're quite confident with conditions on board, that we actually could avoid doing the physical inspection. That was agreed with the vessels as well because obviously from their situation, they felt that as a vessel that's been out at sea and generally a cleansed area where they don't have any cases, the more people that they have on board, the more sort of risk they carry by having external people coming on board. So it was agreed that in those situations where it's a very low risk, that we do not need to undertake the physical side of the inspection. But obviously in association with that, there's a lot less charge, which is the flat rate charge of undertaking a light inspection. I'm sorry, what was the other aspect of the question? And sorry, what was the other aspect of the question?
Recruitment, because you talked about there being vacancies in the last meeting. So I was just interested if any of those have been filled.
Thank you. Unfortunately, no, I have not been able to fill the vacant positions. And I do actually touch on that subject in my update on the EU transition. At the moment, in terms of vacancies, we are carrying a number of vacancies. And obviously, at the moment, the service has been very focused on dealing with the Covid and also the preparation for the EU transition. And also in terms of preparing the service for the EU transition, we will need a large recruitment drive. So it's all going to be encompassed together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Thank you, Lina. We move on. If the members are happy, we'd like to move on to Michaela. We'll present the EU transition update, which she has mentioned in answering his questions. Michaela has raised a number of issues related to Brexit and our transition from the EU. With that in mind, I'll ask Michaela to give a more general update on the transition now. Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you, Chair. So members, the purpose of this update is to update members on the work that's been undertaken by the authority in relation to the EU transition. It has been a period of time since I've updated members because currently at the moment, a lot of focus has gone on for the service in regards to dealing with the Covid pandemic situation. However, in the background, we have always been working on the EU transition. And I do feel that it's at this moment in time that I do need to bring members aware to some of the implications of preparing the service for the EU transition. So just a brief update to members that obviously, as you are aware, on the 1st of January 2021, the transition period with the European Union will end and the United Kingdom will operate as a full external border as a sovereign nation. So in a nutshell, this means that the controls will be in place on the movement of goods between Great Britain and the EU. So as of January 2021, it will mark the first stage of the UK's new import control system on goods moving from Great Britain from the EU. And with it, it will introduce new sanitary and cytosanitary controls, which will apply to goods imported from the EU. Now, the controls will be introduced via a phased approach. So from the 1st of January 2021, the rest of world products that we currently deal with anyway, originating and that transit through the EU will no longer be controlled at the point of entry into the EU because officially the UK will become a third country. And so these will be allowed to travel through the EU under customs control and then they will need to be controlled when they arrive at the UK. From April 2021, all products of products of animal origin will require pre-notification and relevant health documentation. And then on a third-stage transition approach from the 1st of July 2021, EU products subject to controls will need to be presented at a border control post. The physical checks and sampling, so that will be the full introduction of the regime for EU products. Now, the uncertainty from ongoing UK and EU negotiations, as well as the absence of computerised manifest systems at the port of Liverpool for EU cargo, has made it very difficult to make clear planning assumptions and has most certainly reduced the time available for the Port Health Service to plan for the impact of the EU transition. The Department of Environment, Food and Rural Affairs, DEFRA, have provided a predicted number of EU products that will be subject to checks at the port of Liverpool. The estimated figure is approximately 23,000 per annum. And the DEFRA figures provide a maximum and minimum scenario cover for two different potential regimes when the products arrive at the port with different levels of checks. But in any scenario, the level of checks will take account of the checks imposed by the EU on the UK goods of a similar risk. DEFRA therefore provided minimum, maximum scenarios, which reflects the change of check requirements depending on the outcome of any free trade agreement negotiations. However, in either scenario, whether it's maximum or minimum, documentation checks required on food products by the Port Health Service will be approximately 23,000 per annum. Now, during 2019 financial year, the Port Health Service conducted 1,900 on POAL products. So to just provide members with a comparison of the expected increase in workload assumptions, the UK's busiest port currently conducts 21,000 POO checks per annum. So you can imagine that if DEFRA are predicting 23,000 for the port of Liverpool, that is going to bring the service in line with the UK's current busiest port at the moment. Now, the staffing resources at the UK's busiest port has a team of 59 members to undertake those checks. And currently, the staffing resources at Mersey Port Health within my current structure is 15 members, albeit I don't have actually 15 members because I am carrying vacancies. So the Port Health structure at the moment is currently under immense amount of strain due to obviously the workload associated with our existing statutory functions as well as the pandemic outbreak. So the predicted increase will require a significant increase in staffing resources, office space, physical assets, as well as IT support. Based on the minimum scenario, the Port Health Service will require a team more than twice its current size with an increase from what I've estimated at 15 to a minimum of 34 people. Now, in relation to funding, the authority does not have any available funds within its current budget. The authority has already secured funding of £140,000 from the Food Standards Agency to recruit eight additional posts. And I've recently submitted a financial bid to DEFRA to support an additional 12. I haven't had the results back from DEFRA, but I'm hopeful that I will get that over the next two weeks. If successful, there'll be requirement for a large recruitment initiative to ideally have additional staff in post by December to enable the completion of obviously competency training in order for the staff to undertake the checks when they're introduced in 2021. The total DEFRA funding that I've applied for equates to just under £500,000. And this will include the recruitment costs, training, IC and equipment needs. However, both DEFRA and the FSA have advised that funding will only be granted up until the end of the financial year, so March 2021. And while central government have advised that they're confident that funding may be extended during the next financial year, they can't confirm that until April 2021. So in light of this, there is the potential of a funding gap from the period of April next year to July, when the government funding could potentially cease, to when we will need to start generating a revenue when the checks are fully implemented in July. So there is the potential cost of staffing resources to the authority due to the funding gap of £120,000. Now, I am currently at the moment trying to look at mitigating measures to try to have a sufficient staffing resource or structure in place for when the checks are due to be introduced, but also to minimise the cost to the service. And I've done this with various different control methods. My suggestion is that for at least the skilled staff that I need, I would place them on a 12-month contract. And for the less graded staff that I need, I would place them on a six-month contract. But still, it doesn't negate the fact that I will still have this spend if we don't get the funding. Now, I do appreciate that this is a verbal update. I must certainly provide a detailed document report to the committee members during the scheduled meeting of January. But obviously, because there's a three-month delay for when the activities occur to when I report, I just felt it worthwhile to make the members aware because as of January, when I do report, I will already, will need to have the staffing resources in place. So that concludes that brief update and I will just open the floor up to any questions in relation to that.
Do members have any questions in relation to the McCullough's report on the EU transition? I have Tony Norbury, Councilor Norbury.
Hi, thanks a lot. Obviously new to the Port Authority. I just wanted to ask about the recruitment drive initiative. There's going to be 34 new posts created. Would that involve, you mentioned training and getting people prepared to do the inspections. Well, how would that recruitment be organised?
Good morning, Councilor Norbury. So the recruitment, the administrative recruitment process follows Liverpool City Council. So I've been having meetings with the human resource section of Liverpool City Council and I will follow the process and adhere to that. Once I receive approval to go ahead and recruit, then we would advertise the posts. Normal process usually is via the Liverpool City Council website. And then we hold a recruitment process period and then interviews. So it adheres to the processes that are in place for Liverpool City Council at the moment.
Chair, if I may just ask a supplementary, excuse my ignorance, but is there an apprenticeship involved in this? What skills are needed, you know, to be an inspector?
There are various skill sets required for the Port Health team. So the first type of skills that we require, I relate to, is back office work. So they carry out the administrative processes of the authority. And in terms of the skills required for that, it would be your GCSE level type grades that we would need or your relevant grades for NVQ. We then increase to a more higher level. So the skilled type work that's undertaken by Port Health technical officers, once again, it's a more higher level NVQ and more demanded GCSE higher levels and passes from a GCSE perspective. The more skilled type work that's undertaken by Port Health officers and official veterinarians require a degree level qualification as well as compliance and registration with relevant boards associated with both those occupations to ensure competencies and professionalism to practise. So Port Health officers and OVs will be the highest level that we are advertising and you will need strict essential qualifications to fulfil those job roles.
Okay, thanks. Are people with them skills readily available or will we need to, you know, put something in place to bridge that gap?
They're not, unfortunately. It has been a longstanding issue that I highlighted to the committee a number of years ago. And because of that, we introduced a number of training courses as well as a bursary placement to try to secure those skills within the authority. And unfortunately, it didn't really, well, it did work because we currently have a bursary student from a Port Health background working with us. I think the biggest issue that we've got, and it is known by central government and it's been explained by all major ports, there is a shortage of those skills. There is a significant shortage of those skills. Not only that, in relation to the EU transition, ports that never had a border control post will have a border control post. So there's going to be a demand for those occupations. Because of that, I've had to explore various different avenues. With central government, they are exploring at the moment the option of whether a lower skilled person could work under the assistance and under the supervision of the more skilled person. And that is most certainly something that I've explored. And I've created a new position so that there will be a grade four position eventually introduced. So that they will provide an assistant role to the more skilled people. The legislation is very strict in determining who can undertake the checks and who can sign off the official controls. And so it is very likely that the essential structure will be more supportive roles. And then the key skilled staff will act as more supervisors signing off the official checks. But the main type of work will be undertaken by a lower level person that doesn't need the skills. But then, as I said, the demand is very high at the moment for at least the Port Health occupation because of the Covid. And recently, I have lost members of the team, two jobs within Public Health England field of work, as well as Port Health authorities that are already advertising their jobs now. So it's going to be very competitive to try to get the skilled people into the authority.
Thanks for that. Is there an apprenticeship? I mean, what you've explained really with somebody being an understudy is an apprenticeship? Is there an apprenticeship framework on the apprenticeship portal for this particular role?
I have explored that avenue as well previously in the past. In terms of recruitment, because it has been a longstanding issue for Port Health for a number of years, I have explored every possible avenue to try to sustain skills within the service. As I previously mentioned, the bursary. We also tried internally to encourage lower grade staff to, we invested in them by undertaking degrees and tried to enable them to move up to the skill set that we find a shortage. I've looked at apprenticeships as well. Unfortunately, because of the demand of all the training that's required of a Port Health officer, apprenticeship didn't lend itself to the Port Health route because they have to do a professional training assessment that lasts for a minimum of 12 months to 18 months. And so there was just no available apprenticeships at that level to invest in them. It was an investment of around five years to get them to the skill set that we needed. And then we didn't find that we had apprenticeships available at such a lower level to want to do a five-year investment before they get to the grade that we need them. So it didn't lend itself to the situation for the Port Health.
Well, thanks very much for that. So
You're welcome.
Work to do on that, haven't we?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Norbury. Can I bring in Councilor Kemp? Councilor Kemp, you're on mute.
Thank you for the reminder. I'm just amazed that there are so many questions still unanswered when a year ago we were told there was an oven-ready deal, there'd be no border checks, there'd be no bureaucracy involved in all this. Yeah, perhaps I should go back on mute, but who knows why these things are. So I've got two questions. The first is, what preparations are we making for whether, and I appreciate there has to be contingencies, for whether there is or is not a hard border between Northern Ireland and the Republic? Because presumably, that will make changes not only in the way that customs and immigration have to work, particularly in Birkenhead, where you have ferries going to Belfast and Dublin, but also the work that we have to do. Are we getting any guidance about that yet? And I'd like to come back to the cost because it would appear that we may or may not be able to employ staff with money we may or may not have. I think frankly that the Port Health Authority is a sort of forgotten service and that we ought to be as the political members of this committee and hopefully unitedly drawing attention of MPs to this problem, drawing attention to our member council of this problem and unitedly supporting the excellent work Michaela is trying to do to get money out of people like DEFRA. To have a very clear letter from you, Chair, supported by the committee to say that this situation is not good enough. They made these promises, they're not delivering them. So the least they can do is deliver the cash so that Michaela and her team can be expanded properly and supported properly. So I think we need to be more political, not political between us, but political to the government than we usually are as an authority.
I'll certainly look into that with my council leader and I'll ask, and think, so I think the national may have, should have some involvement in that also. Okay. Any more questions on this, on the EU transition to Michaela?
Can Michaela just ask the non-political bit of my questions, Chair?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Kemp. I'm constantly attending meetings with central government. I mean, DEFRA are leading on the EU transition. I have attended independent meetings with them one-to-one and with the port operators to try to establish. There are most certainly going to be checks at the port on EU products. They have produced a border operating model that is published on the government website now to detail the checks that will be undertaken. In regards to Northern Ireland, there is no further information. It's not a topic of discussion at this moment in time. When it's raised, it isn't a topic of discussion. As in, there is going to be no decision. From what we can assume, From what we can assume, there are going to be no additional checks on the products arriving from Northern Ireland, at least on the transition date. It is frustrating, to say the least. We're not alone. It is consistent amongst all the major ports. The frustration, the lack of confirmation, and also the lack of decision-making for the financial support. Central government are aware of this. We attend Port Health daily meetings every fortnight, and the same questions are asked, the same response is given, which is, we will get back to you on this matter. In terms of funding, everybody has submitted a funding bid, but it's yet to be determined what financial support is going to be given. I attended a major ports meeting just before the committee meeting, and no port has received a decision on financial funding yet. So, I can assure you, every Port Health authority within the UK is feeling the same frustration, because in the absence of the funding, we cannot really move forward with the work that's required, or at least the structural implementation that's needed in terms of staffing resources, and also have the available time to train newly qualified staff to the competency level that's going to be required as of the EU transition. And this is just a repetition comment that's made in every single meeting. But it's just a very slow process, unfortunately. And I think, from a Mersey Port Health perspective, I have the structure available. I have submitted the reports to commence the process. But it is just waiting for the available funding before we can take the next step.
Councillor Kemp? On mute?
Yes, I'm very satisfied with the quality of McCullough's report, but not the unfortunate circumstances she had to tell us in. But I think everything she said means that we need to make the problems that she is going to face in delivering our service much more visible. So, yes, you're right. I didn't think of the Metropolitan there. But we have two mayors, of course. I won't give you our description of them. But I think Steve Rotherham should be appraised of this situation, and we should take it up with and through him, certainly.
Can I ask McCullough, in July, what is the worst-case scenario? Does Port Health inspection stop? Does a trade go on without any inspections, without border control? Or sufficient border control?
Councillor Roach, I think the worst-case scenario would be that we just don't have sufficient staffing resources. If I attempted to conduct the checks with the current staffing resources that I have, we will not be able to undertake them. As I said, my team was already under immense pressure because of the additional workload associated with the Covid pandemic. Currently, at the moment, I have received resignations from three members of staff. Because they, one of them, two of them have moved to the field of Public Health England for the public health aspect of Port Health and a better-paid job. And one of them has moved to another Port Health authority that will be undertaking the checks that's newly formed. So, this is, you know, the reality of what I was predicting for a period of time. And the reason why I feel it's essential to start the recruitment process, because it's going to be very competitive. And so, currently, at the moment, my staffing resources, you know, at a crucial level, whereby if the checks do occur in January, of which some checks will be introduced, we will be in absolutely no position with the current staffing resources to undertake them. As a result, the implications there will be EU products that arrive will not be subject to any checks. And, you know, in accordance with the regulations, it will be the case that, as of April, when they are subject to the full checks, we will not be able to accept products through the port to undertake. We just can't undertake the checks, councillor Roach. Bear in mind, please, do be aware that some checks are being introduced in January, but the actual crucial deadline for Port Health is July, July 2021, where the checks will be subject to the same aligned checks of the rest of the world. And that's where we will need a new facility, and we will most certainly need the additional staffing resources. In January, I am confident that we could use the staffing resources that I have, but I would still need to fill the vacant positions. And we could potentially work under the BCP and still work with the easements. But it's going to be very hard. So, essentially, we do need the staffing resources, and certainly to my current structure of 15 members of staff.
Thank you, McCullough. Can you please prepare a letter to the Liverpool Combined Authority Regent, the LCR, to, sorry, to the Metro Mayor and the leaders of the local councils, stating the case and highlighting the need for funding and asking them to
Very sweet.
to seek it. To help you seek it.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine, councillor Roach.
Yeah, Irene, say. You're in. That's it. You're in. That's the amazing thing, you're in.
McCullough?
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, councillor Roach. Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, I was just making a note. I will most certainly prepare a letter.
And then, we will counter-sign that as members of this committee. I will counter-sign that as play on your behalf, on behalf of this committee.
Thank you.
Chair, believe I would add an additional indication of possibly a further question from councillor Norbury, if you're happy to take his question at this point. Just before you do bring councillor Norbury in, if I can advise at this point that councillor Irene Williams has just joined us now. She's been experiencing technical difficulties, so apologies to councillor Williams.
Yeah, sorry about missing the meeting.
Councillor Norbury?
Yeah, can I just agree with the Chair and the course of action that's being taken? But this is a disaster waiting to happen. I just can't comprehend, really, how we've got into this situation. And it's no fault of McCullough or the Port Authority. It just seems that the governments have taken their eye off the ball with this. And I think, as I mentioned before, the Port Health Authority has been a forgotten industry. And it's so crucial that the food items are checked properly and that the proper resources are in place. So, certainly, we'll go along with the letter to the Metro Mayor, but it needs to be in the strongest possible terms, because, you know, we're heading for no inspections, basically. That's what it looks like, or to turn ships away with full cargoes.
Thank you, councillor Norbury. McCullough, any more to add?
No, that's everything for me, councillor Roach. Thank you.
Okay. Can you ring me after the meeting and discuss this?
Yeah.
You've got my number?
Yes, I have your mobile number.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Do members have any further questions in relation to the EU transition?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Can we note the report and update? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, agreed.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you. That seems to be agreed. There's certainly no dissent. Schedule of dates for 2020 and 2021. Can I remind members that our next virtual meetings will be held online on Thursday, the 14th of January 2021, at 11 o'clock, and Thursday, the 11th of March 2021, at 11 o'clock. Both of the meetings will be livestreamed from 11 o'clock. Your attendance slightly beforehand would be valued to ensure integrity of the stream. That concludes our business today. Thank you to everyone for joining us today. And for those members of the public viewing the live stream proceedings, thank you very much, everybody. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. See you, everyone.